In that week, amen? So pay attention. And I talked about, I think it was last Sunday, we talked about what happens when you hear the word. Can somebody tell me real quickly what happens when you hear the word? It does bring forth light to minds. Say again? Can, cleansing? Yeah, the word cleanses. Wisdom, okay, all right. It's more powerful than a two-edged sword. And all of these are so far from the answer I'm looking for, but they're all right. It's all correct answers. When you hear the word, you attract the attention of the enemy. And, oh, I didn't hear, okay. And that comes from the parable of the sower and the seed. Because he says in there, I think it's in Matthew 13, is it Matthew 11? He says that the enemy came because of the word. So it's very important, because that might be, that's real bull of the enemy. Enemy knows you heard the word. He also knows that the word is powerful. He knows that the word can be used to destroy his intentions, but he comes to check us anyway. You know why? Because he, no bloody bus don't understand a thing we hearing. We're not locking in, we're not paying attention, we're not studying, we're not seeking counsel, and we're just going headlong. So he says, all right, they gonna hear our word and not take it seriously? I'm gonna test them on it. And so that's why it's very important to pay attention and to be prayerful about what you're hearing. And I want us to be like Bereans. The Bereans would go back and study. They not gonna just follow something or take it in because pastors say so. They gonna check it, line upon line, precept upon precept. Glory be to God. And when you are that kind of student, you will become powerful in the kingdom of God. Amen? Glory to God. All right, so we went through the story of the lepers for a reason. And I tested my children on Sunday evening. I said, do you understand why I preached? What the real purpose of the message was? And we had a very, I heard some very interesting answers. We had a very interesting discussion. I would do it here, but we don't have the time. I went to the story of the lepers because I believe in short order we're coming out of the sift. Hallelujah. All right, when I come on yours, stay if y'all want to. I ain't trying to stay in here long that I need to. Glory be to God. Sifting is not pleasurable. It takes great focus. But isn't that in our theme? Separation, intercession, focus and trust. It requires great focus to be in sift. Because you're going through pain, you don't like it, you wish you could alter it. But if you alter it, you could mess up the plan of God, and thus the plan he has for your life. And so what you need is you need enduring power, you need patience. And not just focus, you have to trust God that he knows what's best for you. Come here and drink this ursi. But it don't taste good. Okay, go drink Kool-Aid then. Boy, Kool-Aid tastes good, especially when you put half a bag of sugar in it. But what's that Kool-Aid doing to you with half a bag of sugar? That's great potential to make you sick, especially if you're getting up in age. You know, like, you don't need to be drinking too much sugar. Too much glucose, thank you to God. You really pay attention tonight. You have to trust God and believe that he knows what's best for you. How many of you, like over 40, wish you could go back to 18 and do some stuff differently? I should have seen your toes up just now. Not just your hats. Wish, a friend, Edith or someone, wrote a song, "If I knew then what I know now." Yeah, you do some things differently. And that's why thank God, for the grace of God, that you're still here. Say aloud, don't even look at nobody, just look in the air. Thank God I'm still here. Millions didn't make it. But I'm one of the ones that did, I'm still here. And my intention, stay with me all, is to steward well the time I have left. Know that's the time I have left? Because everybody, we're on the clock, y'all. We are on the clock. I know you feel that you gonna live forever in this state, but no, this state get a change. We shall be changed. Hallelujah, the dead and crushed shall rise first. And we that which remain, and we happen to remain, we shall be changed in the twinkling of an eye. Glory be to God. So we have to change this form to go into the next form. Hallelujah. So I chose to tell the lepers and lepers by the spirit of God because I believe that the sift is coming to an end. And if the sift is coming to an end shortly, it also means that greater glory is about to be revealed for those who endured the sift. For those who did not endure the sift, but you just hang on tight, you got a whole lot more time to go. Because God doesn't do social promotion. Y'all know what that is? That's when they graduate, they put you in the next class because you big. Not because you passed the test. You getting too big for them to turn in that class. Everybody 11 and you 17. Okay, time to go. Social promotion. It's time for her to get out of this class. No, not in the kingdom of God. Ask the older saints, not the old saints, the older saints, and they'll tell you some stories how long God kept them in some situations until they say, "I yield, I yield. I yield, I yield," is spiritual for ouch. I can't take it no more. And the thing about, I mean, we so crazy, but we act as though we on the same times get to God on. Time don't affect God. He pre-exists time. And when time is no more, he's gonna still be there. Time is in him, not the other way around. So the lepers, I'm looking at a state, I think you can use the state of leprosy metaphorically as in a condition, being in a condition of sin, a sin state. And the skin is the biggest organ in the body, so it's very important, the care that we care for our skin. Say it's very important? That we care for our skin. Yeah. You don't need a revelation on that. That's pretty self-explanatory. Yeah, you don't want to not be taking care of it and then bacteria and all kinds of things start to bill up on your skin. That could be very problematic. All right, so they're in a sin condition, they're in a sick condition. Sickness came as a result of the fall. And just by an instruction by Yeshua, which they obeyed, their situation turned around. Glory be to God. So essentially, when that leprosy left their body, what happened was, we could consider that a promotion, can't we? They were promoted from sickness to health. Glory to God. From diseased to being in good health. And I'm saying to us, if you missed it on Sunday, that when God heals us of our leprosy. Somebody say, "God, please heal us." Glory be to God. Leprosy is not a good disease to have. Whenever you were considered a leper, the priest was the person who determined if you had leprosy or not. God gave clear instructions, I think it's in the book of Leviticus. May the priest a doctor, a medical doctor, where he would search for certain signs in the skin. And they found it scientifically, that it proves true to this day. They would see and examine the skin, say, "Oh, no, this person get leprosy. You need to quarantine this person, get them out of the house." As a matter of fact, not just out of the house, get them out of the city. So they were isolated. They were cut off from civil society. There was no friendship, they were considered impure. Matter of fact, if somebody seen from a distance, this is how they greeted them, "Unclean, unclean." Boy, that's a life to live. You wouldn't want people screaming out when they see you, eh? Yeah. I want us to understand that when God takes us from the condition of sickness, watch this, or even the condition of not enough, some of you need to, in taking a... Hallelujah. Some of us need to take a little glimpse into the future and see how we look rich. Don't shout again. I'm not talking about your money, I'm talking about your attitude. Some of us are messed up and we broke. Could you imagine her rich? Can you imagine him with all his needs met? You need to examine yourself, forget about him or her, and look at you now. And say, "Do I have enough godliness within me to handle being wealthy?" Oh, yeah, cool. But wealth make me more kind or more mean? Can you handle a new brand car? Glory be to God. Can you be humble even after God moves your miserable supervisor and promotes you? Or will you be more of the same? Don't lie, be honest, anybody else here, you talking to yourself? Talk to your own self. And ask yourself the question, am I ready for promotion? Character wise. The wealth of the ungodly according to Scripture is thought up for the just. And the just, according to Habakkuk 2:4, shall live by his faith. Are you living by faith now? Imagine if you were in a state of depravity and you're not living by faith. You don't trust nothing until you see it. You think you gonna live by faith when you have it? Luke 18, "When I return, shall I find any faith." Good God almighty. The people be determined that they don't need God no more, they got their needs met. Because for them, their life is about their needs. One part of Scripture says this way, their life is about their belly. And now that's food. They're talking about your belly, it's talking about your wants. Someone's, we just got to have what we want now. But you're not ready for it. You won't even allow yourself to have a day of peace because there's always something else that you need. And we don't realize it's a spirit. Because whenever that need gets met, there'll be another. You can't wait to have that shoes. And as soon as you get it, you need the belt that matches. You don't even give God a day of Thanksgiving. Look at, no, don't look at your neighbor. If I was in a foreign country, I would have said, just not look at your neighbor and action. I even scared to ask it hypothetically. Give me bone, this old ghost. But in a foreign country, I tell you, look at your neighbor and ask your neighbor, are you ever satisfied? Don't you do it? Don't you do it, get a mirror and ask yourself it. All right. I feel like I in a conference with plenty of times. Let me wrap this up, I'm going to slow. All right, let's go to Luke 7. Luke 7 says, "And it came to pass, as he went to Jerusalem, that he passed through the midst of Samaria of Galilee." I said on Sunday that he's going near enemy territory because the Jews and the Samaritans didn't really get along. The Samaritans, ironically, were half Jews. But there was still tension between them and the Jews. Verse 12, "And as he entered into a certain village, there met him ten men that had issues." Put issues there because I don't want you to just lock it into that medical condition. They had issues, all of us. If you have issues, lift both hands. If you have some issues in your life, be honest, don't look around, just lift your hands. Issues, whatever issues, financial issues, emotional issues, health issues, not enough issues. Tied to these same shoes, issues. All kinds of issues, all right? So the ten men that were leprous, which stood afar off, because they were supposed to, they're not supposed to get close to people. Verse 13, "And they, Mattiah, your beholder, lifted up their voices." This was a big point on Sunday, but I came back to it at the end. "They lifted up their voices and said, 'Jesus.'" They said, "Yeshua," you know that. "Master, have mercy on us, do something for us, please." Are you crying out to God for help? Or are you crying out to humans? Woo, preacher. Somebody called me today and they were telling me how they need some help with some circumstances. And they were talking and sharing. And they really never allowed me to speak. I couldn't really figure what my purpose in that moment was. But they should have said that. I need you to listen to me for two hours. And there's nobody in here, don't look around. They don't even go to this church. "They lifted up their voices and said, 'Yeshua, master, have mercy on us.'" This is important because sometimes you find more faith in enemy territory than you do in the territory of the familiar. One time I was preaching, this is years ago, before I started pastoring. Man, it was in one of our prayer sessions at 1:00. Man, I was, back then I used to preach 1:00. I mean, dripping sweat. I was preaching and preaching and preaching, and a group that came to visit, and people was coming all the time, every Wednesday, different crowds sometimes. And when I was finished preaching, after the people left, I said, boy, I asked my boy who was next, I said, "Did I get the point through?" He say, "Man, that message is so good. If you was preaching that in Africa, people would have walked on wheelchairs." I said, "You serious?" He said, "I'm dead serious." He says, "Your problem is, is that you only minister in familiar environments where faith is less because of the spirit of familiarity." Don't lie, here in the Bahamas and probably goes in America, maybe in Canada, where we living here in the Western modernized world, somebody, you wonder, where's revival? Is God moving today? What you need to do is take a trip down south. Go South America, go to South Africa, go in underground churches in China. The more they persecute that church, the more miracles they're seeing. There are miracles happening all over the world right now where people are hungry and thirsty for God. I just said something that I didn't say, if you heard it. Our hunger and thirst level is the problem. There's no limit to what God can do. The Bible says he's the same yesterday, today, and forevermore. He's not limited in his power and his ability to do. Glory be to God. Hebrews 11, the first scripture elder read in her prayer session tonight. You have to believe that he is. That's the first requirement. And you have to believe that he's a reward of them that, what's that word there? What's that D-word? So you diligently search for an outfit if you have a date on the weekend. You don't mess around when you have a date. This and the right, this black, but in the right black. Men wouldn't know nothing but what I'm talking about right now, because black is black in male language. I've heard, they have an black pants don't match their black shirt. But they both black. Diligently search that right outfit. And Shaquisha can't do my nails this week because she messed it up last time. Oh, that barber carry my ass back too far. I almost look bald-bladed. You get rewarded when you diligently see God. So the lepers, though, Mr., this is the point I'm trying to bring up here. They recognized Jesus and in the same moment, they honored him. Oh my goodness, is that not a curse word in the days modernized world? Honor? You don't honor nobody. Use man eyes man. Use woman eyes woman. Sorry, I'm speaking Bahaminese. You are a man, I am a man. No cap. Whatever, I said, I said, I said what I mean, sorry. If I use that on a context, forgive me. That's right? Okay, all right, all right. Honor for what? You put on your pants one leg at a time, just like me. And so we don't give honor. The problem is in the kingdom, there's so much reward attached to honor. You wanna live short, start disrespecting your parents for nothing. Why she die so young? You ever hear, talk Bahamian for a second, you ever hear how she used to talk to her mom? Wife, vessel conviction drop in the room is now. But you don't know what my mother did to me. Still honor. That's mama. You don't understand how my God chose her, but you'll understand after a while. Bye and bye, when the morning come. You'll tell the story, how we overcome. We'll understand it better. Yeah, some things, they don't know what I'm talking about. Some things you will understand later. And so, oh my goodness, I didn't realize how God prepared me for what God called me for. If Chetokhurabahash, if I didn't go, I'm telling you all this right now. If I didn't go through some of the things I went through several years ago, I would be no good to this church. Because half of the people I give good counsel to, I would not have been able to relate. God allowed me to go through some stuff. And that made me empathetic. It gave me a different view of life. Glory be to God. Because some of us, if God don't let us go through some stuff, we'd be too arrogant for him to talk to us. But, well, you preaching tonight, you know. My God, my God. I could go to a hoop now if I really wanted to. You're going through because you're too high. Look, no, don't look at your neighbor. I'm sorry, I can't do the neighbor thing tonight, I'm sorry. But if I was in a different country, I would tell you to look at your neighbor and tell your neighbor, "Come down. Come down, Zacchaeus." I can't help you up there, Zacchaeus, come down a little lower so I can, so I can help you. So they lifted their voices and Jesus, they said, "Jesus, master, have mercy on us." Verse 14, "And when he saw them, he said unto them..." Do you know praise is how you get God's attention? I'm gonna say it again, praise is how you get God's attention. A factual fervent praise is how you get God to step into your prayer and give you solutions. They praised him, they called him, and they said, "Master." It puts them in a position of servitude and humility. And they got his attention. Some of us didn't get his attention yet because we don't praise right. We don't put all our effort into praising him. You didn't scream for God the way you screamed for that basketball game. You didn't scream for him the way you screamed for that perfume set they bought you. You think he is not recognizing when you are truly excited from when you're not? All the affection you give to men and women, and you can't give none to God? Alabaster box, you don't even bring it, but you leave it home locked up? I've come to port, nothing. I'm getting ready clothes. "And when he saw them, he said unto them..." Isn't it as powerful? It wasn't a long dialogue, they called unto him, "Master, have mercy upon us." Their distance away, he didn't go into no long talk? Good God almighty, this is not the Bahamas. Because you can't give instructions right away in the Bahamas. You get, you get a, you gotta do all kinds of stuff. Sometimes I'm giving people instructions, and they don't realize I was trying to give it to them two weeks ago. Y'all catch that later. Been waiting for the right moment. The Bahamas, you get a butter up, slick down. That's it. Lotion. And still check back. But immediately, Jesus gives them an instruction. Go, show yourselves unto the priests. Now let me give these lepers some credit, I'm gonna give all 10 of them some lepers. At least they were not like Naaman, who got offended by the instruction of Elijah. Go dip yourself in the water. Why I gotta go in that water? Now, Naaman sounds Bahamian. That's Bahamian. And Jamaican, for those who from Jamaica, where else you from? If it's black people in your hard head, that's the same thing. Naaman said, "Well, I gotta dip in this water. The water where I come from is much better than this water." Hold on, hold on, last time I checked, Naaman, you the one with the leprosy. And you came looking for the prophet, he didn't come looking for you. You come to an anointing and you wanna question and give all kinds of backtalk? Go! That's what Jesus said. Go show yourselves unto the priests. Jesus, you know how far the priests is from here? Aren't you supposed to be the high priest of the high priest? Aren't you the lion of the tribe of Judah? What's happening? What we going to the priests for? Okay, don't go then. "And it came to pass that..." And it came to pass, immediately they obeyed. "And it came to pass that..." I mean, y'all picture this man, they cross the road, "Jesus! Go to the priests." They start walking. You say that quick into action? They didn't have to wait, no two weeks lost. Thirty seconds exchange. "And as they went, they were cleansed." Same verse. Same verse. Go. Obedience. Cleansed. Go. Obedience. Cleanse. You hear that? Go. Obedience. Cleansed. And one of them said, "My God, I'm healed." And he saw that he was healed. He turned back. So I can't go to the priest, I gotta run back and say, "Thank you." This is a beautiful picture, you know. Almost a picture of the veil being rent into two. Because I don't think he rented the priest after he gone back to Jesus. Don't miss that. Wait, what, what, what the priest for? So them said, "Keep on walking to the priest." He turns and asks, "Hold on, God, God done heal me. I'm going back to tell God, 'Thank you.'" So that he was healed, turned back, and with a loud voice glorified God. He had his own praise and worship service. Before, there were 10 of them having praise and worship together when they wanted to get Jesus' attention. After they got Jesus' attention, only one turned back to say, "Thank you." Isn't that like us? Glory be to God, we come from miracles on Sunday, we get the miracle, and we don't come back to say, "Thank you, Jesus." We come back to act for something else. Acts energetically and he glorified energetically. I don't like this thing when we get to act now, two, three times, to praise God, like you doing God a favor. Maybe I should stop. No, I can't let you give God high praise. The loud voice glorified God. Verse 16, "And he didn't stay there. He went further and fell down on his face." True gratitude, true gratefulness at his feet, giving him thanks. And he was a stranger. No familiarity there. Jesus answered, said, "Were there not ten cleansed? But where are the nine?" And gratitude is a serious thing. The Jews didn't embrace him when he came, and the kingdom was ripped away from them. Don't miss that. And was extended to the Gentiles. Glory be to God. That's how we getting there. Glory be to God. So now the kingdom was open, not just to the Jews, it's open to everybody who believes. You gotta believe though. You gotta believe, gotta repent, and you gotta follow after his ways. There is a prescription that must be followed. There, he says, Jesus goes on, he says, "Were there not ten? But where are the nine, where the rest of them? Where are the rest of them?" So God had an expectation, this must be highlighted. God had an expectation that everyone who got touched, who got healed, were supposed to say, "Thank you." Were supposed to come back and worship. Not move to the next thing, no. Pause a moment. Glory be to God, you didn't have no job for 10 months. Look at you, you're working now and already complaining about the job. Did you give God thanks for the job? Were you even grateful for three weeks? Or did you join in with the rest of the staff who been there for 10 years and complain about everything? But you just ain't had no job. You didn't have $1.50 to catch the bus. Look at you in your new brand cubicle. Tired of that cubicle. Glory be to God. "There are not found that return to give glory to God. Save this stranger." This message tonight is saying to us, as God allows those of us who want to get out of the sip to get out of it, don't you forget to stay humble and to give God fervent praise, fervent glory. Because when you respond that way, you attract even more favor. And one of them, when he saw that he was healed, turned back, fell down on his face, gave thanks, and he was the stranger. Jesus answered, said, "More were supposed to come back." "There are not found that return to give glory to God. Save this stranger." Don't miss that. To give, Jesus acknowledges here who he truly is. Underline that verse. Because I just read that too fast. I said, "Hold on, hold on, hold on. Did y'all see that? Who is he referring to? Himself." That's big. Because I'm sure after this parable is when he still had to say, and line the boys up and say, "Who the man said I am?" "I've been telling y'all all along, I've been dropping hints right in front of your face. I've been doing those things which have never been done before by anybody, and you still don't know who I am." Do you know who Jesus is? I'm gonna let you know, you don't find out who Jesus is from your pastor, or from your evangelist, or from your Grammy. That comes through personal encounter. That comes through personal encounter. Have you ever needed him for yourself and he showed up? Have you ever cried unto him by yourself and he shows up? If you've not had that experience yet, keep on reaching. Glory be to God. Because every one of us needs to have the encounter for ourselves. You cannot continue to rely on somebody else's experience. At some point, you need to have one for yourself. That's when you're gonna start living right for real. That's when you will start being apologetic for your posture. That's when you're gonna really start to have a humble spirit, when you have the encounter for yourself. Hallelujah. Somebody say, "Lord, give me an encounter, please. Lord, give me an encounter, please. I need one for myself." I need a marker. I need a divine marker that I can look back to every time I forget. I act crazy because I forgot what God did for me. I need something that I can, and some people, hear me, hear me, hear me. Some people have not had it. In all their church experience, they have not had it. That marker is so strong, you don't need somebody to say, "Hold on, wait a while." Because the Holy Spirit begins to prick you himself. And when that happens, say, "God, I'm sorry." Woo, you apologize quick, because you know you don't want the wrath of God to fall upon you. He said to this fellow who was grateful, he says, "Arise, go your way, your faith." I was guessing before whether he went back to the priest. He didn't go to the priest, he said, "Go your way. Go live your life." Your faith has made you whole because you believed to come back and give God glory. You believed to come back and give God thanks. God got some things he want done. I don't want you to think that there's no limit on what he'll do for you. He says to his servant who loved him, he says, "Son, is there anything too hard for God to do? Is there anything too hard?" They obeyed the instruction, they were healed. Faith, write this down, "Faith and obedience in the anointed one yields the fruit of healing." Faith and obedience in the anointed one yields the fruit of healing. Finally, a heart of gratitude attracts more. A heart of gratitude attracts more. James 4:6 says, "But he giveth more grace." Therefore he said, "God resisted the proud, but he giveth grace unto the humble." Somebody give God praise.